You ready?
Yes.
All right. I will call to order the Monday, January 27th, 2020, meeting of the Oregon City Planning Commission. And item number one A is going to be introduction of our newest member, Chris Staggs. Chris, welcome to the group. We're glad to have you here. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. I'd just like to say I'm happy to be here and I'm looking forward to making a contribution to the city from a public servant perspective.
Good. We're glad to have you here. Okay. Item number two is election of Planning Commission Vice Chair and Chair for 2020. So we'll start with Chair and we will open nominations.
Well, I think Mike's led us well, so I'll nominate Mike for Chair. Second.
A second.
Other nominations?
I've got popcorn, I'm happy.
All right. I don't see any other nominations, so do we need to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. No other nominations, we'll close the nominations. And...
I can just go down the line and call?
Yeah, I was gonna say you probably should get it on the record, right? All right, go ahead.
Or you can do a...
Call or roll.
Okay. Commissioner Guile?
Epstein, um, oh, aye.
He needs it more than I do.
Aye.
Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Staggs?
Aye.
And Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
You realize I've made it through eight years without having to serve in that capacity? All right.
We're not done.
All right.
We're seven and a half.
Well, thank you. Oh, I appreciate that. And we will move on, we will open nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to, uh, well, I can't speak. Nominate Dirk.
I'll second that. Any other nominations? Okay. I don't see any, so we'll close the nominations and go right to the vote.
All right. Commissioner Staggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Commissioner Slagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
I guess so.
Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right. On item number three, which is public comments, there are no members of the public present, so there obviously are no public comments. We'll move on to item number four, for a legal training, Ms. Turway.
All right. I will pass it over to our Assistant City Attorney, Gary Richter.
Thank you. Um, I have done this legal training for many of you for a number of years, and so I've got to give you all your money's worth and educate every one of you, even though many of you have served for, like Commissioner Guile, eight years, and Commissioner Staggs has served for about...
Eight minutes.
Five minutes. So, uh, I'm gonna try to focus on, um, putting everything together, and you all, one of the biggest tasks before you for 2020 is gonna be adopting your comprehensive, a new comprehensive plan. And the city's comprehensive plan is, how many years old?
Two thousand and four.
So it's twenty-five years old? Is that the math?
Uh, no, no. Fifteen years.
Fifteen years old.
Fifteen?
Fifteen years old. So, um, I think maybe only Laura Turway may have worked here.
Have you worked here for fifteen years?
Laura Turway and I are the only people who have been around the Planning Commission for that long. And even I was just a baby lawyer, and so I don't remember it, and Laura was a baby planner, so I don't know if she remembers it. But, so anyway, so this is a big task, and this is, the comprehensive plan is the constitution that drives the city's planning program. So there's a lot to it, there's a lot of moving parts, and so I want to talk to you about sort of all the components that are gonna go into this, and sort of how it, what role it plays in the larger planning scheme that the city operates under. At the same time, I'm gonna cover the same old ground, the ex parte contacts, and the conflicts of interest, and all that boring stuff, but you have popcorn to keep you awake. My goal is for us to be out of here before 8:30, but if you have questions as we go along, please interrupt. This is supposed to be a dialogue, and it's for you, as well as for everybody else here, so please share your comments, criticisms, jokes, anything.
Keep it exciting.
Yeah, keep it exciting, wouldn't you? It's on you. We'll count on you to keep it exciting. So with that sort of introduction, I'm gonna jump right in and, um, talk about the background regulations within which the city operates. And we have the federal, and the state, and the regional land use framework. And so we talked before about the federal requirements. The most noted federal requirement comes from the U.S. Constitution. The U.S. Constitution provides a couple of real property guarantees to property owners, most notably the Takings Clause, that says that government cannot take private property without just compensation. Five words that have led to more Supreme Court cases than many other five words in constitutional jurisprudence, but, um, so that's one of the parameters in which we operate as a city government. Due process and equal protection, that has to do with the process that we give to folks when they seek a land use approval. Equal protection has to do with treating folks fairly and equally. In addition to the Constitution, there are federal laws and regulations that we have to abide by, for example, the Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act, those are things that are in part implemented through our land use regulations. They RULIPA, I threw that in there just so you guys could all learn a new acronym. It stands for the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. You might ask what religious land use and people who are in jail have in common. The answer is that they are religious land use activities, and incarcerated people are subject to discrimination as a result of their religious beliefs. And so this act protects them from activities by local governments that serve to curb religious activities. So this is the situation where a historic, a church is in a historic building, and they won't let the, and they won't let the building be remodeled because of design overlay restrictions, but the, um, the building needs to be remodeled in order to further a religious exercise. For example, the building needs to be expanded so that a religious figure can live in the building, because that's part of a religious practice. And so to deprive this church of the ability to expand, to accommodate this religious practice is discriminatory and is not allowed under the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. So, um, so churches, religious institutions have a special protection under that act. So you all have gotten your money's worth today. I can go home. Okay, so...
Learned something new.
The State of Oregon regulations, these are the, these are the sort of lion's share of the framework of that we work under in land use. These are the statutes, the Oregon Revised Statutes, and the nineteen statewide planning goals. And the statutes provide minimum procedures that the city has to follow when it processes a land use application. The statutes provide some substantive standards for particular types of land uses. For example, the one we talk a lot about is clear and objective standards for housing. When we review applications for housing, we have to review them subject to clear and objective standards, that's a term of art, that can be contrasted with a discretionary standard. So that's why part of the equitable housing effort that Laura put us all through last year was to ensure that our regulations are clear and objection have been satisfied, that statute. There are regulations that govern annexation of land into the city. There are statutes that explain how we have to control our public records and how we have to run our public meetings. And then the nineteen statewide planning goals are ambitious objectives that the state has identified as goals to be achieved through land use regulation. And they are broad, and they are vague, and they say things like protect natural resources, the level to which we have to protect natural resources not defined by the goal. In some cases, the administrative rules that implement the goal give further direction. For example, there is Planning Goal Three that requires the protection of farmland. Planning Goal Four says the protection of forest land. It doesn't say how we go about doing that, but the Department of Land Conservation and Development, a state agency charged with implementing land use policy in the state, has adopted administrative rules that say the protection of farmland is the protection of land with certain soil characteristics. The protection of forest land are lands that are capable of growing a certain amount of timber. Planning Goal Twelve requires planning for adequacy in our transportation infrastructure. The administrative rules implementing Goal Twelve provide for how we have to plan for transportation, and that requires identifying what our population growth is gonna be over a planning horizon, determining how much traffic that generates, and then planning roads, to develop roads accordingly. So those are all set forth in administrative rules. The third sort of level of regulation comes from the metropolitan, regional metropolitan government of the Portland metro area. Metro sets the location of the urban growth boundary for Oregon City and all of the other Portland metro cities, because it's one big line around the whole metro area that we're all partners in its determination. Oregon City has a, is lucky or unlucky because it is on the edge, and so when the urban growth boundary gets expanded, it usually includes land within, adds land to Oregon City. So that adds another challenge or another opportunity, depending on how you look at it, but Metro is the entity that decides that. Oregon City does not decide where the urban growth boundary is. Metro decides what the population growth will be. They decide on a regional basis. They decide where that allocation of land for, if they decide they need land, where the land's most suitable for inclusion in the urban growth boundary will be, and they are the ones that expand the urban growth boundary. So the city participates in that process, but we don't decide it. Commissioner Guile?
Good question on that. Has the city decided, because while they determine the urban growth boundary, has the, I know several of the cities are trying to determine whether they should go forward with annexation, and I was here at one of the commission meetings where they were determining whether they were going to put a, what would you call it, a hole on it for a while? Have they ever decided what they're gonna do here in Oregon City?
On annexation?
Right, because remember there's several that they were considering, and I was here that night where they said, "We're gonna put a hole on it." I thought that's what they had said they were gonna do, and so while Metro determines urban growth, the city still are allowed to decide for themselves, is that not correct?
Well, we can, we'll talk about that in a little bit, but I think the, I think the answer, I think the short answer to your question is you are correct, that the city has decided to analyze it a little bit further, but I don't think we've had any annexation applications that we've held up as a result of sort of thinking about it and talking about it a little further.
Okay.
So, um, Portland, or the Metro, the Metro government also has what they call the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, which is a lot of words that mean that they have regulations that the cities have to implement. For example, Goal Five, statewide planning Goal Five has to do with protection of natural resources. One of the natural resources that's included in Goal Five is protection of streams, riparian corridors, and wetlands. Metro has implemented regulations for how local governments have to do that. And so the city has then in turn implemented those regulations as part of its planning program. So when we're talking about a comprehensive plan amendments, for example, we're gonna have to keep in mind what the Metro regulations require as well, because we cannot contravene them.
Are there other goals other than Goal Five where Metro has set out requirements?
Um, most of them have to do with riparian areas, wetlands, there are, there are requirements about urban planning for, in the Metro requirements. It's the Metro requirements that require us to concept plan, and we're gonna talk about a little bit about what concept planning is, but in sum, Metro expands the urban growth boundary, and after that happens, all that does is expand a line. The land within that urban growth area retains Clackamas County jurisdiction, and it retains Clackamas County zoning, so it's rural zoning, like one house per five acres or ten acres, not urban zoning, five houses per one acre or smaller. So it retains all of its characteristics of being part of the county even though it's in the urban growth boundary. So all that does is sort of show a line on a piece of paper. The Urban Growth Management, Management Functional Plan requires local governments to then adopt a concept plan, which is like a miniature comprehensive plan for that area. And so that is what the city adopted with the Beaver Creek Concept Plan. Beaver Creek Concept Plan had to comply with these Metro requirements about how you sort of start the dialogue about the long-term urban development plan for these areas, because you wouldn't want to have to adopt a whole new comprehensive plan for this little area that's just been added to your urban growth boundary. So then, so moving beyond sort of, we talked about the federal requirements, the state, we talked a little bit about the regional government requirements, so moving on to Oregon City's regulatory framework, we start out with the Charter, and the Charter has provisions primarily for the structure and management of the city itself. It calls for the operation of the city commission, and it calls for what the city manager does and the city recorder does. This planning commission is not identified in the Charter, but is rather called out in the Oregon City Municipal Code. The Charter, in addition to sort of the operation of the city, it identifies the determination of city boundaries. It says that the boundaries of the city are set, and unless dictated otherwise by law, annexation shall be determined by the voters. And that's the provision, that is the voter-approved annexation provision within the Charter. And so up until recently, in the, with the change in the law, the city had voter-approved annexation in all circumstances. We can talk a little bit more about the change in the law, but that's what, where that provision comes from, comes from the Charter.
Is there any new news or update on the lawsuit over?
No.
Okay.
No.
Any reading the tea leaves, how soon it might be?
Well, here's, so the, um, there is a challenge by the city of Corvallis, arguing that the Charter protections for voter annexation should trump the change in the law that says that Charter voter requirements cannot control. So the question is, the legal question asked to the Court of Appeals is whether or not the Charter and Home Rule controls, or whether this change in state law that appears to trump Charter and Home Rule controls. And, um, that case was argued in June of last year, and we are still awaiting a ruling. There is no timeline in which this Court of Appeals has to rule, unlike land use, land use cases have timelines where they say, the Court of Appeals will rule within seventy-seven days of oral argument, for example. You don't have that same requirement for non-land use cases. So we don't have a sense. I've had cases that have taken a year. The longer it takes, probably that suggests it's better for local governments, for the Charter camp, because it means that the court is going to overrule what the lower, makes it more likely the court is gonna overrule what the lower court said, some people think, but you never...
And that decision could still be appealed to the state Supreme Court, right?
It could. It could, but the review by the state Supreme Court is permissive, in other words, it's not by right. So you have to ask the Supreme Court to take review.
Right.
And so it's not clear whether they would or they wouldn't. If they do take review, it would be five years. Three to five years.
One question. So if the Court of Appeals does rule one way or the other on it, could we then start making decisions on annexations based on that, or we still have to wait and see if it goes up to the Supreme Court?
Um, we don't have to wait. What, my, my recommendation probably would be to wait until the initial appeal period to the Supreme Court, which I think is sixty days.
Okay.
So probably you get a ruling from the Court of Appeals and probably wait sixty days, just because you'd want to see if there's an appeal. If there is no appeal within sixty days, then you're good.
Okay. Who would appeal? Secretary of State?
Uh, maybe, or Corvallis.
Well, I mean, if Corvallis wins.
It would depend on who wins.
Yeah.
So if the law was considered, or the, that the state approved for annexations was found, are deemed to be unlawful, any annexations that occurred in between that time cannot be reversed, right? They have to stay...
They wouldn't, I don't think they would be reversed.
Even though they, it could be said it was unlawful to put that out in the first place?
They would not be reversed, because they, they were, they were decisions that were made when the statute was in place.
But still deemed illegal by a lawsuit?
But the, the, most, in most cases, a lawsuit does not stay the effectiveness of a law unless you get an injunction or a stay.
I see.
You know, an injunction is when you go to the court and say there's an immediate harm, you need to stop enforcement of this law. There's no injunction in place or a stay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we've talked about the Charter. Moving on to the comprehensive plan, um, the comprehensive plan provides the local implementation of the statewide planning goals. So it's the comprehensive plan where the city has said, "These are the things that we are going to protect, this is the development we're going to support, these are the sort of policy guidelines we're gonna follow." And this is a long-term planning document, so twenty years out. In twenty years, this is the kind of city we want to have. And, um, so that's what the comprehensive plan is. It includes within it components that are city directives, and then components that are directed specifically at private development. And so there are comprehensive plan policies that say things like, "The city shall ensure public participation during its land use reviews." Well, that's directed at the city, not directed at a developer. That is a, that is a guiding principle for the city. There are other policies, though, that are more directed at development, and we can talk a little bit about those, I've got an example of one a little bit later, but it's important to know that not all of the comprehensive plan policies are specific to private development. I think probably if you were, I haven't actually mapped them out, but I bet more of them are directed at city, at what the city will do than what private development will do, because when you think about, um, the city's got an obligation to be able to serve development. We've gotta provide it with water service, we've gotta be able to provide sanitary sewer service, we've gotta be able to provide roads that are adequate capacity, we've got an obligation to ensure that the development will function in a way that is compatible with the neighboring property owners or the city as a whole. So there's a lot that the city has to take into consideration as part of its review and, uh, long-term planning policy decision-making. So, um, we also attach to the comprehensive plan as ancillary documents are master, utility master plans. And you've probably heard us talk about the Transportation System Plan, the Stormwater Master Plan, the Sanitary Sewer Master Plan, Water Master Plan. These are, um, planning documents similar to the comprehensive plan, except for they're specific to a utility. What they do is they evaluate the condition of the existing system, identify, given the population projection and the job growth and all that kind of stuff that the city's expecting, what kind of additional infrastructure investments are gonna be necessary, and where are those infrastructure investments going to be necessary? It's not that the city's committing to pay for them, it's just planning for them, so that when a developer comes along and wants to, say, change the zoning on a piece of property to make the development more intensive, a applicant comes and wants to annex property to bring it into the city, we, the urban growth boundary gets expanded, we can know exactly what kind of infrastructure improvements are going to be necessary to serve that development. And then we're not just sort of scratching our head going, "I have no idea whether or not the roads are wide enough, I have no idea whether or not," you know? I think about, um, I've got relatives in upstate New York, and they have townships there, right? They don't have this coordinated government stuff. And so you go there, and you, and the townships are tiny, so when you go there, you go from one township to the other, the roads go from super smooth to super potholy and bumpy, because there's no coordinated planning. And then the infrastructure and the roads is so poor and it's not mapped, that there's collapses all the time, because their pipes are super old and we don't, they don't, they don't map them. And so I have a friend who's a professor there, I'm like, "How do people live like this?" And he's like, "You take for granted that in Oregon you have to plan for this." And I thought, "Everybody did this, like, why doesn't this make sense everywhere?" Well, apparently, we're the exception, we plan for things, and by planning for things, then we're able to meet the demands of development when it happens. So, anyway, that, that's, that's the important role that these utility and infrastructure master plans play. And then when we get a development proposal, and we need to determine if, say, we've got a, we've got pavement in this development that does not meet what our Transportation Matt System Plan identifies as necessary to serve the development, then we have a basis to ask the developer to contribute to that improvement because we've planned for it. So it gives a legitimacy to our decision-making that is really critical. Moving on to the Oregon City Municipal Code and zoning map. Is the zoning map on the wall? No. Everybody seems to know.
It used to be.
Yeah.
You have it memorized.
Right.
I know what mine's on.
Commissioner Staggs, this is one of the things, after three months, you get a test on the zoning map, like, and we bring out colored pencils, and you color it, right? It's not works, and everybody has to pass, or, no, anyway. The zoning map works, it's a color-coded map that shows what zone all of the land is in, and I'm going to assume you all know what a zoning map looks like and what I'm talking about, but more importantly, I think the Oregon City Municipal Code is over there. Tom's using it as a... Tom's using it as a footrest or something.
I would use it what?
The municipal code book. Is it there?
Is it over here?
No, it's over, it's down the counter a little bit.
Anyway.
Oh, it's way over there.
It has the, it has all the, all the day-to-day land use regulations that the planning staff uses to review development. And it implements the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan we talked about is sort of these discretionary, sort of 60,000-foot level policy objectives for the city. The rubber hits the road with the municipal code. And if the municipal code says you can do it, you can do it. If the municipal code says you can't do it, you can't do it. And so, this is sort of the detailed nuts and bolts of what you all are asked to interpret, consider, proposals against. The municipal code has a whole bunch of provisions that have nothing to do with land use planning. But the land use planning parts of it include zoning and overlay designations and the use authorizations allowed in the various zones. It has provisions about land divisions and development standards and has land use procedures. So, just as an example, I wanted to show you so you could just see the difference between a comprehensive plan policy and a municipal code provision. So, comprehensive plan goal 10.2 says supply of affordable housing. Provide and maintain an adequate supply of affordable housing. Well, what is an adequate supply? What is affordable housing? All of these things are sort of 60,000-foot level. This is something we will do. How do we implement that policy? Well, one of the ways that the cities decided to implement that policy is to allow greater density in the single-family residential zones by authorizing corner duplexes. And so, that authorizing corner duplexes helps to implement goal 10.2, potentially. And then, how we, what circumstances in which we will allow corner duplexes is then set forth in the municipal code. And it provides very specific, clear and objective development standards for allowing a duplex, including the height of the units, the configuration of the units, where the entrances have to be. The list goes on and on. But you see that the comprehensive plan policies are much more general and do not, if we use the comprehensive plan policies to regulate development, there wouldn't be a whole lot of guidance to an applicant or to an opponent about what will and will not be approvable. Whereas the municipal code regulations provide more specificity and provide more predictability for the land use program. And also, allow staff to implement a lot of these land use approvals or implement these code standards and they don't have to come to you. Questions? Comments? There are other construction-related regulations that have, that have to do with land use, but they're not things that you all review. For example, once somebody gets a land use approval for a land division, these are subdivisions or partitions. Once somebody gets a land use approval for that, they go forward and they proceed with their development by installing the roads and the, or installing the infrastructure. But the first step they have to do is divide the land. And they divide the land by recording the final plat. And that is the map showing, survey showing where the new property line's gonna be as a result of the land division. And so, reviewing the final plat is done by the building official? Or Public Works? Who starts that process?
Public Works.
Public Works starts the review. And they confirm that all the conditions of the land use approval are satisfied. And then, once they are satisfied, once they are happy with the improvements that are necessary in order to record the plat, then they sign off and the planning department signs off. And then, the county surveyor is the body charged with recording the final plat. And that's when the land is officially divided. So this is a process that does not ever come before you. Building and construction code, the electrical code, the plumbing code, the residential building code, these are all detailed construction standards about how you can build a house or how you can build any kind of building. And that is implemented by the city building official. And that's not something that we have any purview over. The third sort of big category of things are Public Works Infrastructure Design Standards. I think they're also called standard specifications and design details. And this is, again, the engineering design components that go into how thick of asphalt you have to put in and what the consistency of that asphalt has to be. And how you build a curb and how you build a cul-de-sac and all of those sort of detailed infrastructure specifics that are implemented by the Public Works Department are mind-numbingly boring to people like me. And, you know, sort of, they probably say the same thing about the law stuff, but anyway.
Everybody has their role.
Everybody has their job to do, right? So, anyway, so these are things that are all, these are all sort of land use-y things, but these are things that we don't, that is not within our parameter as the, as part of the planning department land use planning purview. So, let's just walk through these standards taking an example of urbanizing some land. So, and we've kinda talked through this already, but just for, because I haven't the slide. So, step one, land gets added to the urban growth boundary. So, Metro decides it's appropriate to urbanize land so, because they need additional, there's a need for a greater amount of land. And so, they expand the urban growth boundary. We talked about how the next step, the city's job once the urban growth boundary is expanded is to adopt a concept plan. That means we have to decide how we are going to urbanize, how we want to urbanize this area. So, when the urban growth boundary was expanded to accommodate Beaver Creek, one of the justifications for the expansion was the provision of industrial land. And so, that's why a fair percentage of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan provides for industrial land, because that was one of the bases that Metro brought the land in. But it's not specific exactly what industries we're going to serve with this area. It's not even specific enough to say that this amount of acreage has to be industrial. There's a little bit of play, because Metro, when they decide to expand the urban growth boundary, they don't go ground-truth the area. They don't go walk around and say, "Oh, there's a stream here. Oh, there's a steep slope here. There's a wetland here." They just say, "You know what? This is not high-value farmland. This is not forest land. This is land that can be served with infrastructure. So here is a good place to expand the urban growth boundary." So then it falls on the city to decide what makes sense from a ground-proofed, truthed plan. So, the concept plan is a robust, local evaluation of where the industrial land will be in this area, where the residential land will be, where the commercial land will be, how the roads will run. But even that is not dividing land. It's not a land division. It is not, it often does not even set the zoning. All it is, is, again, the 60,000-foot level concept plan for what we're thinking we want this area to look like. Step two is, is most often annexation. Yeah.
Before you leave, step one.
Yeah.
So we have three concept plan areas: Park Place, South End, Beaver Creek. Those were all driven by this requirement?
I know that that's the case. I don't know about South End.
I think so. The rules for doing concept plans have changed throughout the years and we've had, we've been expanding our urban growth boundary a lot. So even Beaver Creek has like three different times of expansion or something.
Of urban growth boundary land in it.
We did create the plans all around the same years, under the same assumptions, though.
So, Park Place, Park Place and Beaver Creek, yes. South End, I'm not sure, but I think so.
Okay. We have a, there's a lot, we have a lot of other land between the city limits and the urban growth boundary that we don't have, we don't have to go back and create concept plans for those? You know, like play catch-up?
No.
No, the slivers around town. So we have the big chunks with these concept plans. The rest are just pretty slippery.
Okay. But if Metro were to come along in whatever year and add, you know, go further out Beaver Creek Road or something, then we, if it's a substantial chunk, we would have to do another, a concept plan for that also, right?
Yep.
All right. Thanks.
They changed the rules throughout time, so now we have to do concept plans when it expands.
Changing the rules? Can you send that blowback down this way?
Yeah.
Oh, whoa. These poor blows. Wrong one. I thought you said hole on the way. No, no, blow, send the blowback this way. I was trying to be discreet, but that didn't work. Okay, step two.
We just asked a question, so you can say this.
So I do have another example. That is the school district. Last year, the year before, I lose track of time, was thinking about requesting an urban growth boundary expansion in Holcomb area. And so, they put in a proposal to expand. And then, Metro asked the city for a comment, but they were, they're the ones that ultimately decided. If it would have been approved, they would have had to do a concept plan for their one property.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a certain land size that kinda triggers the need for a concept plan?
I, my recollection of those regulations is that it's any size. I think, I think that if there were a sliver, that if the urban growth boundary was expanded just a sliver, I think that rather than concept plan it, you could just, if it was just a one, one tiny piece, you could just annex it, rezone it and adopt a comprehensive plan designation for it. And then avoid the need for a big concept plan, because you wouldn't need it for a little tiny piece.
Yeah.
You see what I mean? Because you, if you were gonna bring in a little tiny piece, you would have some planning reason to do that. Like, you really need this, this piece for a road or a pipe needs to go right here to serve some other area already within the urban growth boundary. So, if you're bringing in a piece for a pipe, you wouldn't concept plan that area, because it's not gonna facilitate any urban, I mean, it will facilitate urban development, but it's not gonna provide any urban land that will be developed for housing or other things.
Yeah. Could you just attach it to an existing concept plan?
I think you probably could, or just attach it as part of your comprehensive plan. I worked on the Gresham-Barlow High School. And the Gresham-Barlow High School is outside the urban growth boundary. And they had to, they would truck their sewage into Gresham. And so, as part of the upgrading of the school, they wanted to extend a pipe out from the city of Gresham, which is like less than a block away from the Barlow High School. And so, we had to get an exception. Our choices were expand the urban growth boundary for that pipe or get an exception to the statewide land use schools in order for, to bring a sewer pipe out to the high school. So, anyway. So, step two.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Sorry. So on step one, when you're, there's land added to the urban growth boundary by Metro, but it's not yet a part of the city?
It's not.
Yet the city has to adopt the concept plan?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But that concept plan has no, doesn't have any regulatory impact until the land is annexed, because it is not, the land is not within the jurisdiction of the city.
It's still county.
It's still county land.
Yeah.
So, the concept plan is really nothing more than printing on paper.
A proposal.
Well, it's adopted by the city. It is what is going, it is what is going to guide the city in deciding the annexation and the zoning that follows and everything like that. Again, the goal is to provide predictability, right? To give everybody a big heads up. This is what we're thinking about doing in 10, 15, 20 years.
So what jurisdiction decides that that concept plan is the right concept plan?
The city that will bring the land in.
Okay. Not the county?
No, the county, the city does it in, the city gives the county notice. And my recollection in Beaver Creek was that the county did submit testimony.
Oftentimes, there'll be county roadways that are adjacent too, so there is an impact. So they definitely play a role. There might be utility services they provide.
So I find it interesting that the county is the one who decides where the urban growth boundary is?
No.
Metro, excuse me, Metro does. But the city has to, I know, because I've been through three concept plans, that it costs the city a lot of money to put in place a concept plan, all the hearings and all the staff time. So the county pushes the city and the city has to put out the money to appease the Metro, it sounds like.
They do, but to be fair, we've, we have received grants from Metro to pay for the concept planning. More, more often than not.
Does it cover all the cost? Because I always hear from you how much these things cost.
Probably not. Probably not our staff time, just consultant time.
Yeah, Metro pushes a lot. Okay.
Yes.
All right, step two, annexation. So, this is the process by which the city expands the city boundaries to include land within its jurisdiction. And annexation has two components to it. It has a land use review component. And then it has this second political component, this voter approval component. And the state statute that was amended to eliminate voter approval did not alter the land use approval component. It just eliminated the political component. So, the city gets an application for annexation to include the lands within the city boundaries. The city has, reviews that annexation proposal to determine whether or not it is possible to serve the land. The city doesn't have to actually serve the land upon annexation. Annexation, again, just brings it into the boundaries. It does not allow development. What allows development is zoning it to urban densities, right? Because when it's in the county, it's one house per 10 acres. The infrastructure demand resulting from one house per 10 acres is negligible compared to the infrastructure demand on urban densities. So, it's the rezoning and that, that puts in place the development authorization that follows. So sometimes, annexation applicants say, "All I wanna do is bring the land in. That's all I wanna do. I don't wanna rezone it. I don't wanna plan it. I don't wanna do anything. I just want it to be in the city." And so the city annexes it and it retains its county zoning. And says, "I'll come," and the applicant says, "I'll come back at another time to seek the zoning in order to develop it." Then other times, applicants... Then other times applicants say, "I wanna annex it and I want it rezoned." And there are a number of factors that may go into an applicant's analysis for which one they want to do. But, uh, either alternative, we have approved or, or we have, we have allowed an applicant to do it separately or together. But it, it, the annexation, so the annexation land use review piece is, again, not to require that the infrastructure be there, but that it is possible to serve it. So it's a, more of a feasibility determination than an actual, actual capacity question. And so one of the criticisms of that annexation land use review is that it's kind of teethless, toothless. Because it doesn't actually require that the infrastructure be there.
What's the criticism?
That, that it doesn't require that the infrastructure be there. For example, there are circumstances where annexation, development of an annexed area will require a big infrastructure expenditure, like a pump station, right? Or, um, a big arterial road. And questions about how that funding will happen have not yet been decided when an annexation application is filed. But that question does not have to necessarily be determined at an annexation phase. We know it is feasible to provide that pump station. We know it is feasible to provide that big arterial road. How exactly it will be funded and who, how the cost will be allocated won't be, hasn't been determined yet. But that is very unsatisfying to folks who see annexation as the jurisdictional trigger point. Um, so that is, um, that is one of the reasons why voter approval provides a political backstop, right? And that's one of the criticisms of eliminating it. For applicants whose land, who, property owners whose land is in, are in the urban growth boundary, they have been concept planned, they have gone through an annexation process, the decisions about urbanization have already been made. So why put them through the rigor of, I'm not arguing.
Oh, no, no, no.
Pointing out the arguments on both sides of a political vote.
And my question is, why do you suppose it was put in almost every city's charter to allow voter approval of annexations? If that was a consideration, did they not take that into consideration back when they put it in all these charters? Because it still isn't our charter.
No, I understand. It's in, it's in many charters. And I, I don't know why. All I can offer is that there, the state statutes that govern annexation provide for voter approval in certain circumstances and non-voter approval. You know, you've probably heard of the double annexation or the triple annexation. That has to do with how many people consent to the annexation. And it has to do with the vote, whether the people in the annexation area, all the property owners in the annexation area consent plus all of the, um, uh, people who reside in the annexation area. I mean, there's all these sort of, uh, machinations in the statute about how annexation can occur. And sometimes it's voter approval and sometimes it's not. Setting aside the charter. So I suspect that that provision is to reflect that variation in state law because the charter provision in Oregon City says, unless otherwise, unless otherwise specified by law or unless law says otherwise, I mean, I can go get it, but it's something like, it has an opening qualifying phrase that says, "Unless otherwise provided by state law, boundaries shall be set by the voters." So there's some acknowledgement of voter approval and not voter approval in state law.
I just found it interesting when you said the word political decision. I thought is that because anything voted on is considered political decision?
Yes. Anything that voters consider is a political decision because it's, right? You're trying to convince voters to support it.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Does a property have to be within the UGB in order to be annexed?
Yes.
It does?
There are certain circumstances where we will, where there can be, um, annexation outside the urban growth boundary for emergencies, but very, very rarely.
Interesting.
Okay, moving on. Can we move on? Safe to move on? We're halfway through the bowl of popcorn and we're an hour in, so I gotta hustle. Alright, step three is apply the urban zoning designations. And we've talked a little bit about that happening. Um, that is where I said the rubber hits the road for development. I mean, that is, that is where development can occur at those densities. And, um, so sometimes step two and three are together. Sometimes step three and four are together. And sometimes step two through four are all together. It just depends on what the applicant asks the city to review. Uh, step four is the development prong. And that's, um, where the actual land use, uh, development is proposed. Um, and there is the land division, a subdivision or partition we talked about a little bit. There's also a thing called a master plan or a planned unit development. And these, master planning happens in, um, for developments that are larger, smaller scale than concept plans, but larger scale than single development, usually phased development. So for example, Clackamas Community College has a master plan. And that sort of talks about how they plan to grow and what buildings they're gonna build and how they're gonna operate their campus over time. Red Soils has a master plan. And the reason why applicants like master plans is because it gives them a single review of a bigger chunk development. And it assures, it guarantees that review of subsequent development will happen pursuant to the code standards that are in place when the master plan occurs. So it gives them an insurance policy that they will only have to comply with today's regulations, not regulations in the future. That is very good for an applicant because then they know how to, they can predict how their development, what their development requirements will be.
Can they choose to go by the new?
I believe they can choose to go by the new ones.
Okay. So like if you, if you had a master plan and it was gonna be all single family and, and now our code has changed to allow corner duplexes, I could do corner duplex if I wanted to, even though my master plan at the time it was adopted didn't allow for those?
Yeah, I think the county's master plan is a good example of that because they have had so many different developments as it's phased in. And sometimes they'll choose the code that was in place when the master plan was approved or that part was amended. And then sometimes they'll choose today's code.
Okay. But it's up to the applicant, not the, okay. But, um, that doesn't include plumbing code and electrical code?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
How, how long has master planning been around? It, for the residential areas? I think my concept is it's, it's, master plans have been there for the county in bigger pieces of property that will be developed, we know, at some point in time. But is, is it relatively new in the residential districts?
We... I don't think there's, it, it's not limitation on where a master plan can be.
No, not now. We had, we, before two thousand four, we had planned unit developments, which were a master plan for residential. In two thousand four, we got rid of PUDs. We still had a master plan section. And you could have done a residential master plan. We just didn't have a lot of guidance on how to do it.
So PUD and a master plan were kind of not falling the same pea shell, but they were similar.
Yeah, so the newest round of code amendments, we changed the title to say master plan slash PUD. And now it's just interchangeable.
So, um, so it's co, it's very easy, I think, to confuse the term concept plan and master plan because they sound kind of the same. And, um, the important distinction, I think, is that the concept plan is, um, happens much earlier. And the concept plan is a Metro requirement for land within the urban growth boundary that is added to the urban growth boundary. A master plan is, um, closer to the, is, is accomplished closer to the time that development is going to occur. And, um, one of the code requirements for Park Place, um, was part of the ICAAN annexation, is that they do a master plan. Um, and so oftentimes, the city uses the master plan as a planning tool to provide for an interim step for big developments to sort of evaluate the infrastructure and the cost and all of the sort of competing factors that are gonna go into a development that is of a bigger scale.
So a concept plan is done by the city and master plan is done by the landowner? Is that a fair statement?
Master plan is applied for by a landowner. Um, then we have, can, somebody else had a hand up or a comment or?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, on, in the concept plan, is that, are the guidelines for concept plan? Who, who is the guideline? Where do those come from?
The Metro's urban management functional plan.
Okay. Gotcha.
But the concept plans are all discussed with several community meetings, correct? I mean, God knows, I've been through enough concept plans.
But also, in addition to the Metro regulations, the statewide planning goals are directly applicable to a concept plan.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And the statewide planning goals would not be applicable to a master plan because the master plan is reviewed against the municipal code. It's broken. Time to go. There you go.
That was it, thank you. That was real good.
Needed some popcorn too.
Popcorn lasted a while throughout it.
Okay, um, now we're sort of moving into, um, the more specific, um, regulations that relate to the job the planning commission does. And I'm gonna move through these quickly because some of you have already heard them. Um, Commissioner Staggs is familiar with the development process a little bit more so than some of you may have been when you joined. So I'm gonna move quickly and ask him to interrupt me when I'm going too fast.
Yep.
So there's different types of land use reviews in Oregon City. There's the administrative decisions. Uh, these we call type one decisions. Uh, for example, final plat review that I talked about, that is a type one decision. There is no discretion associated with it. So because there's no discretion, uh, there's no notice, there's no hearing, and there's no opportunity for appeal. And these are all done by staff and you never see them. There are three types of what we call quasi judicial decisions. These are decisions, um, where the planning commission or the city commission sits as a judge. These are where the city's job is to review the proposal to see if it satisfies the applicable approval criteria. Type two decisions have limited discretion in the decision making. And so the process for those decisions is to provide limited notice to neighbors with an opportunity for those neighbors to provide written comment. The planning director makes a decision. And then, uh, folks who submitted written comment have an opportunity to appeal that decision to the city commission for review. Uh, type three decisions are the decisions that come before the planning commission. These are the discretionary review decisions to determine if the criteria are satisfied. They include notice, a public hearing by the planning commission or the historic review board, and an appeal right to the city commission. Type four decisions are, um, plan amendments. That's where we change the text of the comprehensive plan. Or zoning map amendments, where we change the designation applicable to a piece of land, uh, to a, that are, it's applied to a particular property. The key here is it's a particular property. It's small-ish.
Does the master plan have to go through two, three, or four?
Uh, master plan, depending on its size, would go through either type four or a legislative decision. Is that right?
Okay, thanks.
I think, a master plan.
Type three, like the, the county or the hospital? Is that kind of master plan you're talking about? Yeah.
Or any of the concept plans?
Concept plans type four.
Or legislative.
Master plan is type three.
Well, concept plan have a master plan afterwards?
Not always.
Like in Park Place, there was a concept plan, now a master plan.
But Beaver Creek won't.
Part?
For example, Beaver, Beaver Creek doesn't have that requirement.
Okay. But Park Place did. I heard they were going through a master plan.
They are. When they had the annexation, the applicant self-proposed that.
So that's what I was asking, do they go through three or four or both or?
Um, so when you do, the concept plan itself went through four, the master plan are legislative, and then the master plan will be a three.
Three, okay, so it still comes to, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, Park Place is coming back to you.
Oh, great.
Yes.
Is this framework universal across the state or is this specifically Oregon City?
This...
The, the type one through four?
Um, the, these categories of reviews are universal. They are based on authorizations in state law. The type one through four labels are pretty universal, but not necessarily. Some jurisdictions call them class one, class two. Um, sometimes there is no four in jurisdictions. Um, the four is a legislative decision instead of a quasi judicial decision. So there is some variation, but usually these are the numbers and...
Okay, thank you. But, but who does what isn't, is not the same across all jurisdictions? Like, some of them have a hearings officer and not a planning commission. Some have, there's no appeal rights when others have it, right?
That's true, yes.
And some may have, uh, right now in Oregon City, well, in Oregon City subdivisions go through a type two staff review. In some jurisdictions, that might be a type three. And our code amendments, those, all those code changes, we had stuff that used to be a type two that we decided we can do this easier with no discretion over the counter. So it's cheaper and quicker, so it's a type one.
I've got a question that goes back to the, um, concept plan. How, how, how does a city decide what kinds of density would be the best fit for that particular area?
A bunch of public meetings to talk about it.
Okay.
I mean, there are some parameters. For example, Beaver Creek, like I said, was brought, some of the land in the Beaver Creek concept area was brought in to serve industrial, an industrial, a regional industrial shortfall. So the city could not have designated all of that land residential.
Right.
But...
But did, uh, did Metro say how much high density they wanted? How much, did it put any criteria in like that?
I don't think so.
Because of the ten units an acre thing.
I thought there was a requirement for density.
But that's not, that's the minimum urban rule.
I think that's what he's asking though.
Sorry, I thought there was a, I kept hearing through, and some of us may have through, like Beaver Creek, that there's a requirement for so much density.
Or density goals or something?
Yeah, it's, we were just talking, this, uh, notion of a minimum of ten units an acre is a minimum urbanization level for residential.
That's called the Metro Housing Rule.
Hmm, okay. So the applicant can interpret the Metro language and say, "Well, we think instead of doing X number of housing units per acre, it should be this."
Well, we have to, we have to meet the, the, the minimum, ten units per acre. But then after that, we can decide, we wanna put a whole bunch of density over here.
Right.
This is a really good view corridor, so we don't wanna have any houses here. We wanna put a park here. We've got a stream here, so.
And also, you can go beyond to do more density than the minimum. In our case, we have some concept plans where we only substantially comply. So we don't even... even really hit the minimum, but it's okay. We're kind of within that wiggle room.
So if somebody wants a sprawling lot, and I've seen some out at Redland Road that are still in city limits, uh, they, they have to have a minimum of 10, or that's just grandfathered in because they were there before the rules went into place?
You want to answer that?
You know what I'm saying? I've seen some that are huge properties. I couldn't believe it was in the city limits.
They're all gonna be huge properties until they're urbanized.
But you said a minimum of 10.
But, but that's overall. If you do the math at the end, because, I mean, you're gonna pull out areas for streams where there's not, you know, where you can't build on and other things like that, so it's overall. And some of these concept plans, we did these, uh, exercises where you had chips and you could like move them around, and they represented different densities and stuff. At the end, it was to get the math all to add up. But you certainly have the right to say, we want a node here, and we want the lower density here on the edge, things like that.
Okay, it's not gonna happen, but if somebody wanted to buy 10 acres of the high density and not build anything, could they?
Absolutely.
They could just put one shed on there?
Absolutely. There's nothing, you don't have to build anything. The point is, if you want to build, here are the standards in which you have to build. You can build.
So if all the neighbors didn't even want to sell their land, it could just stay the way it is?
Mm-hmm. Right. And on, and on that, tailcoats of that, too, um, the city processes, the planning division processes applications as they come in. You see applications as they come in. We can't control what comes in, when it comes in. I'm sorry, sometimes we overload you on meetings because you have to. So there is, uh, we are not the architects of the timing. It's always up to the property owner to decide what to do with that property.
So when people come in and ask, how can they stop development? They just have to talk to a neighbor and tell them not to sell. Or buy it themselves.
Buy it themselves.
Simple. I've known people that bought the vacant lot on either side of them just so they don't have a neighbor. I mean, you know, and they don't build it.
They could.
Yeah.
We talk about it, but then we never do.
God, if I could buy a hall in Park Place.
You could. Absolutely could.
Okay, so, um, legislative decision is the, um, other side of the planning commission's role in addition to, um, the quasi judicial type three decision making. Uh, legislation decision making is policy making decisions. And this is what adoption of the comprehensive plan is going to be. It will be a legislative decision. Um, and, uh, the planning commissions, I, there are some jurisdictions that the planning commission's only job is legislative. Multnomah County, the planning commission only does legislative decision making. They have a hearings officer who does all the quasi judicial stuff, which can be a lot of fun, but it's also a lot of work because there's a lot of moving parts because there are no rules, right? The rules are protect streams, protect historic resources, you know, provide adequate transportation. But other than that, sort of, it's up to you. So, um...
Can you remind me on de novo, is that, is that open or is that the one that's only on, things that are on the record?
De novo is, the way I think about it is, uh, like new. De novo is Latin for like new.
So they can hear anything?
So they hear anything.
I see. Okay.
So the city commission, so, uh, in legislative decision making...
That's only on legislative.
Yes, only on legislative decision making. The city commission's review is de novo, meaning they take new evidence and they consider new, uh, they consider testimony from others, um, whereas in the type three decision making, uh, an applicant's only opportunity, or a participant's only opportunity to submit, uh, new evidence is at the planning commission level. And then the city commission's review is limited to the record that was created before the planning commission.
Quick question for you, Laura. So we're looking at the comp plan this year, but the comp plan has to meet with the codes. The, the, you said we're gonna have groups of, uh, meetings of citizens, so they can't change the code. They're only looking at the comp plan that's within the code, right? You can't, they can't go in and say, we want to see that code changed. They're only looking at the overall picture? I kinda...
Yeah, we're gonna update our comprehensive plan this year, and the comprehensive plan could have action items like, go update your code to allow more types of housing, like, like we just did, or something like that. So it could have some action items in it, but no, we're not changing our code.
So it could influence the code that we just went through years of, of updating and changing?
Yeah, I was just making that as example, but if it, if, for example, re-inventorying natural resources has been an item of discussion, the, that could make its way into the comp plan to have an action item to re-inventory the natural resources across the city.
How much influence do the citizens have on that comp plan?
The most, because they're writing it. It's, the comprehensive plan is a plan by the community, for the community, for the future.
But, but the city must guide that in some way because a lot of individuals coming in saying, I want this and that. They don't understand that you have to follow certain codes or there's certain requirements that can't, just can't come in willy-nilly and say anything, right?
Yeah, I mean, we'll talk about our process a little bit later, but, um, we just want to know what people want for Oregon City. What are our priorities? What do we value? And then we can deal with figuring out state law later. Like, I don't, I don't need to tell everyone what state law is. Just tell me what you want to see here, and then we'll kind of, you know?
Okay, thanks.
But it's, but it's, the, the municipal code is supposed to implement the comprehensive plan and not the other way around. So we're not bound by what the municipal code says.
Then Laura, uh, then Carrie, wouldn't the comp plan come before the code, all the code changes? Wouldn't that have been the way it works?
Um, it could have, but that's not the way the city did it because of, because of the desire to address equitable housing and diversity in housing first.
I think it's a cycle. We'll do our code, I mean, you know, we'll, you'll see, you'll do these. There never is a one before the other because it's just continuous.
It's a chicken and egg situation.
Keeps you busy.
So at the start of every, um, type three hearing, you will hear, um, Chair Mitchell read a script. And that script is, um, a public service announcement for all of the people who are attending the public hearing to know what the rules of the hearing are gonna be. And in those disclosures, uh, there are a couple of critical components that I'm gonna share with you, but they are, they are components that are part of the land use review process in addition to being disclosures. One is that there are applicable approval criteria that apply to the different, to the, depending on what type of application it is. And the staff report that staff puts together, um, making an additional, an, an initial recommendation to the planning commission identifies those criteria and sort of summarizes the application in relation to those criteria. The disclosures also note that a staff report has been made available seven days in advance. So that staff report is emailed to you as part of an attachment to the agenda for the planning commission meeting. The disclosures provide that testimony must be directed to the applicable approval criteria. This is important because you have a job, which is to evaluate whether the evidence is sufficient to satisfy the standard. So when people come and they testify about things that are relevant, those cannot be considered as part of your determination of whether the criteria are satisfied.
So, so that's, the public can testify on anything they want.
Sure.
It's, it's kind of our job or part of the staff's job to sort out, one, three, and five don't even apply, get rid of it, and two and four are they...
Well, I think it's, I think it's in part staff's job. I think it's in part your job to understand that, and it's in part an education. That's why we include it as a part of the disclosure so that people know. For example, I mean, the best example I can think of is a church applicant. Church applicant comes and they bring 100 people to talk about what good work the church does. Whether or not the church does good work is not an applicable approval criteria, or what a good person this applicant is. That is not an applicable approval criteria. So that, so when we're managing hearings and we've got a room full of people, we need to encourage people to keep their testimony towards the applicable approval criteria because that's what we're here for. And that's what we have jurisdiction over. That's what we can evaluate, not the quality of the character or the applicant. Another disclosure is they have an obligation to raise issues. Quasi judicial hearing procedure is like a, review is like a funnel. So it's at the first phase, we want all of the evidence, we want all of the concerns to be voiced at the very first hearing. And the planning commission is the very first hearing body. So we want to encourage folks to bring their issues in early. That's a fairness issue to all of the participants in a, in a proceeding. It's a fairness issue to the city so that we know what people's concerns are. It's a fairness issue to the property owner so that they know what they, what areas they may have to adjust their application. And it's a, uh, it's a fairness issue for, um, concerned citizens who need to know exactly what everybody else's concerns are. So anyway, so there is an obligation to raise issues. If you do not raise your issue, uh, the city commission may not consider your issue because we talked about how the city commission's review is limited. And then if you're still unhappy with the decision and you want to appeal it beyond the city commission to the Land Use Board of Appeals, you have to have raised issues before the local government in order to be able to raise them at Luba for Luba to consider them. And the reason this is a rule is to keep people from lay, sitting in the weeds and raising issues after the fact, right? Laying in wait. No land use lawyer, I, I know would do something like that, but, anyway, um, it's a strategy. Um, the, um, another issue is an obligation to raise constitutional issues. This is the takings clause issue. You have to raise a takings concern, uh, early in the process so that the city has an opportunity to respond to it. Again, it's a fairness issue. You have a right to an impartial tribunal, which means that the, um, planning commission is not going to be biased, uh, or, uh, is, have a conflict of interest, or have otherwise judged an application in advance. This is all ensuring that, um, participants to the process have due process rights and have a fair opportunity to, uh, get the approval that they seek. Quickly, an impartial tribunal, um, requires, requirement, mandates that we disclose ex parte contacts. So the world of evidence in which the planning commission considers a decision has to be, um, in the public record, in either writing or orally presented at a hearing. If somebody comes up to you outside of a hearing and asks you what you think about something or tries to convince you, you should think something. That is called an ex parte contact, and you can have ex parte contacts. It is anticipated that you will, but if you do, you have an obligation to disclose them on the record so that the public has an opportunity to question you about those contacts. So, um...
What does that look like? The question?
What does it look like?
You said they have an opportunity to question you about it. What would that look like?
Um...
Can you give us an example of that?
Sure. Um, it doesn't have, has it happened in, it hasn't, I, I can't remember.
I've seen it happen before the city commission, but it hasn't happened to me.
They, it's happened with me when people question my, my ability to make a proper decision. An attorney just comes up or somebody comes up and said, I think Mr. Commissioner Guile has a, an interest in this or a conflict, and, uh, he should address that, and then the attorney can make the decision. And I've had to recuse myself several times.
Well, um, when, so, when the, i- i- in an ex parte contact situation, you come to the hearing and the chair will say, has anybody had any ex parte contacts? And you'll say, I read a newspaper article about this application. Or I saw an Oregon City Raw, this, um, post, and I read it. And so, um, sometimes I would, most times, if you ask me in advance, I will tell you to bring a copy of that, what you read, so we can put it in the record so that folks have an opportunity to comment, to comment about it. But in the grocery store scenario, you're buying, you know, groceries, and somebody comes up to you and says, you know, this conditional use permit application is gonna be before you next week. I really think you should not approve it because of the transportation issue. So you come to the hearing and you say, somebody came up to me in the grocery store and told me not to vote for this because of this transportation concern. Um, an applicant, for example, may want to question you about that, i.e., they would ask you, so Commissioner Stacks, you, um, when you heard this, what did you think? Did you think that person was right? Did you think that person was reliable? Do you think that there's a transportation shortcoming on this, in this intersection? And you can answer those questions. And the, and what they're, what we're trying to get to is to, or what the process is trying to get to is whether or not you can put that information aside or otherwise evaluate it in the public hearing process, or if that secretly has convinced you that you cannot approve this application. Because this whole review process, you're sitting as a judge, so you are going to make a decision setting aside whatever biases, whatever sort of preconceived, um, ideas you may have, you know, you may hate this applicant, you may think they're a thief, you may think that they, you know, are bad for Oregon City. Can you set that aside and make a decision based on the approval criteria? And so the questions should be directed to ferreting that out.
And then also, the other thing is we want to make sure that we all have the same information to make a decision. That's why there's no internet on these computers. You're not allowed to have your cellphone here texting or things like that, is that we all need to know the same information. And the applicant has the right to address, know, know what you're thinking so they can address it as well.
So on, is, is there kind of a two-part thing on ex parte contact? It's initiated by a citizen that meets you in the street or wherever, then have a conversation, and I take it there, as a commissioner, you would want to cut that conversation very short. Or it could be in the reverse, that you're talking to somebody and you're talking, not thinking. You initiated, we initiated the ex parte contact with, oh, I didn't know you were the attorney for that guy, or I didn't know that you were the, uh, architect or, or whatever. Both of those, basically, you want to cut them off, and you, the one you start, you should be able to know better and, and do, not do that. The other one, you need to be pretty quick on your feet at the time in the grocery store or on the street corner and get out of that conversation. I think.
That is a personal choice. Um, you know, it, it, I, I would agree with you because I think it, I think that the, the quicker you can cut off a conversation like that and say, look, this matter's coming before the planning commission next week. I urge you to come to the hearing, and I'd love to hear your comments then. Then you're encouraging participation, you are being kind, you are being open, and you're being a real human. To just, you know, put up your hand and walk away may not be something that you want to But I can also appreciate the fact that you could be at a cocktail party and somebody starts talking and you don't realize what they're talking about. They're talking about an intersection and you're saying, yeah, I agree, this intersection's really horrible. And then later they disclose, oh, well, you know, this conditional use permit that's on this app, on this intersection, will affect this intersection, you should vote no for it. And then you're like, oh, man, what did I do? Right? So sometimes you don't know.
Yeah.
That also can go back 15, 20 years. I mean, on the planning commission before, we've had school teachers who say, I used to work for the school district, so I may be impartial, but no, I'm here to make it, uh, I'm here to be impartial. Or I've got articles in the paper that go back 15, 16 years. And so people can pull those out. So it's not just the week before or month before. It could be anything you've said all the way back or anything you've written.
Well, and, so that's, that's another, that's, that's different from an ex parte contact. That's your experiences. And that's, you know, I have experience as a, uh, working for the waste treatment facility. So I have particular expertise in waste treatment. And so if that experience is going to color your review of an application, you need to put that experience out into the public record before the record closes. And that is the same with, if you live in a neighborhood where you drive through an intersection every day, and you know when the intersection is, is up to capacity, based on your own experience, you need to share that experience before the record closes so that everybody knows this is your experience, right? And that this could influ, this is, this, this, you think this is gonna influence your decision, right? But there may be a circumstance where you, what you think about an intersection is your personal feeling about an intersection, and you can't... and you can set that aside to review an application, right? We're human. We can decide to put things in a box and review it pursuant to the approval criteria and make a decision based on that approval criteria. And that's all we're asking you to do. It's both a difficult challenge and an easy challenge, right? As Yoda or somebody would say, right?
Ex parte contact only occurs after the application's been submitted, is that right? Is that what I'm remembering? Okay, okay, I got it wrong.
After?
After an application has been filed.
Okay. So if I'm talking to my neighbor about whatever he wants to do, but he hasn't actually filed?
Filed an application, it's not an ex parte contact.
Okay. What about we're talking to the neighbor and then the agenda comes up and we read it and we realize we were talking about?
That's why you have an opportunity to disclose them at a hearing because there's a whole bunch of things we don't know about.
Or the same thing if you go out to review the property and the person comes up?
Well, yeah, because we have site visits too.
Yes, site visits.
Um, actual bias is when you have a predisposition rendering it impossible for you to make a decision. I mean, there are certain things, there are certain types of things that we cannot set aside our personal biases about and make an impartial decision because of where we live, because of who the applicant is, because of what the proposal is. You know, the most prevalent bias cases are with liquid natural gas proposals out at the coast and Walmart. Those are the two things that people apparently cannot get over. So in those circumstances, you have an obligation to step down. And if you reach out to Laura, or reach out to Laura and she can help, work with me to help you steer through that. Conflict of interest is, has to do primarily with a pecuniary benefit. If you stand to benefit in a financial way from a particular proposal, then you have a conflict of interest and in most cases you have to step down. So for example, the employee of the school district. We had, who was it that had a child who worked for the golf course? I don't remember who that was.
I think Ben used to, I mean Damon used to.
So anyway, so we've talked about those things. Public meetings takes a quorum in order for the planning commission to deliberate towards a decision. That is right now four people, right? Public meetings are open to the public. They, the agenda gets posted and minutes of the meetings are taken. If there is, the issue with public meetings for your purposes is there's such a thing as a serial meeting, which is what happens when you all hit reply all. So Laura sends an email to you all saying, I want to solicit your feedback on this idea. And you all hit reply all. Even if you hit reply four people. That is a public meeting and requires minutes and the public, and a public opportunity to attend the meeting. So we want to avoid a reply all and instead respond directly to Laura and she will communicate with you in due course.
I'll only blind copy you guys anyway.
So that's the issue with public meetings.
Do you talk about when they speak to a commissioner who speaks to another?
Yeah, okay, so in addition to the reply all, I want to put the fear of reply all into you, but also the game of telephone. In other words, Commissioner Guile emails Commissioner Schlagenhoffer and asks him what he thinks about something and then some city business, I should say, not whether, not what Commissioner Schlagenhoffer's had for dinner, but what, something city business related. And then Commissioner Schlagenhoffer thinks about it some more and he emails Commissioner Gage. And Commissioner Gage thinks about it some more and adds to this thread to Commissioner Mitchell, Chair Mitchell, excuse me. And so it goes down the line. Even though all of you were not talking, there is a serial public meeting. And that violates public meetings law. So again, I urge you, instead of talking to each other by email, talk to Laura and then the communication goes through Laura. There is no prohibition in talking to staff as long as there's not four people talking to staff about a city, about city business at once. Because then that makes a public meeting.
It's our job to support you and make sure that you have everything you need to make an informed decision. So if you have any questions or you think we're missing a piece of evidence or something like that, we are here to serve.
So if Laura solicits feedback and five of us reply and then she puts that all together and emails it out to all of us, does that constitute a?
No, because it hasn't been a communication between each of you. It is a communication with Laura that Laura then consolidates and sends out.
And then I would put it in the record so the public could see.
So Wednesday night, the training and sale, how many commissioners are going?
Four.
To that, four. So we have to be careful that we don't, at a coffee break, go stand over in the corner and say, hey, you know, we just heard something that applies to this thing that we're going to be dealing with. We have to make sure we are not talking about Oregon City business.
Perhaps make up your examples.
What?
Make up examples rather than draw from your experience.
Exactly, yeah, don't draw from anything that we know.
Is there a, I know the city mail, email, and then our own private email. Is there some pros and cons of which ones we should use or which ones we should never use?
So that has to do with the public records. So that has to do with public records, not public meetings. So public records are writings, including electronic records that have to do with public business, city business. And those things are all public records. And so work done on a private email account can be a public record even if it is done on a private email account. This is why we urge you, we issue to you and urge you to use your city email address and communicate city business using that email address. So that it's very clear when we get a public records request, we come to your city business email to review it. If you don't use your city email address and we get a public records request, we will go through your private computer, which is not something we want to do or you want us to do. So we urge you to use the city designated account for city business. You need to also avoid commenting on instant messaging or chat room provisions unless there is a mechanism in place to capture that information. As far as I know, there is no mechanism in place for Oregon City to capture that information. So that's why if you see an Oregon City Raw story, print it out and bring it and put it in the record because we don't have a way to capture it.
Attorney has done, they brought in my writings before. How did you know about Oregon City Raw? No, Mike Robinson brought in a whole printout one time of conversation.
No, I know, he printed it out. There isn't an electronic saving, there isn't, it's not saved in the cloud somewhere that is in Oregon City's control. All right, so the public hearing procedure is structured in order to allow fairness and allow everyone to have an opportunity to testify. The applicant bears the burden of proof, so we let the applicant go first and we let the applicant go last. So the applicant presents their case. Then we hear testimony from interested parties, both proponents and opponents. And then we allow the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal. And then at that point, after the rebuttal has happened, then the public record is closed. That means no new evidence is allowed and this planning commission deliberates to a decision. Questions about that? When it's a crowded room, we can impose time limits. When it's not a crowded room, you don't have to impose time limits. It is at the chair's discretion ordinarily with conferral from the planning commission about whether or not you want to do time limits or not. So this is where all the excitement happens in the deliberation, the decision-making. And your job is to determine whether the standards are met. And components of that determination include, first, interpreting the applicable criteria. That means evaluating and giving meaning to ambiguous standards that are not, that is, those are not clear and objective standards. Those are standards like, is it compatible? Is the infrastructure adequate? Those are discretionary standards that you guys are charged with interpreting. We usually try, when I offer advice on how to interpret the criteria, we focus on the plain meaning of the terms, considering the context for those terms. So things like introductory portions of those policies can help inform what the meaning was or the intent of the drafters at the time. But this is, this is why you are selected because you are supposed to interpret what the standards require. The secondary point, the second job, or secondary component of a supportable decision is that it's got adequate findings. That means it adequately explains, the decision explains why the criteria is satisfied. And this is what is, these findings appear first in the staff report. And then the staff recommended findings get modified as part of the public hearing process. And so these findings have to address all the applicable approval criteria. And if the criteria isn't applicable, the findings have to explain why this is the case. I mean, this is, basically the judge's written opinion are these written findings. And of course, with everything, staff is here to help with that. But that, and the more you can give us in your deliberation, decision-making to explain what you're thinking, explain the analysis you went through, then we are able to help you translate that in writing. And that is really the linchpin of a supportable, legally supportable decision. A decision has to be based on substantial evidence. And that means would a reasonable person look at this evidence, looking at this evidence, find the way that you did? This is, the court, Luba or Court of Appeals will use a reasonable person standard. So is there evidence that a reasonable person would rely on to find the way they did? And this evidence has to be in the record. It can't be based on your personal experiences outside the record. It certainly can be based on your personal experiences. You're here because you have personal experiences, but you need to share those personal experiences when the record is open because it's, nothing is more cringe-worthy than to have the record be closed and be in deliberation. Somebody says, well, you know, I've driven through that intersection 100 times and I can tell you that it is X, Y, and Z. That is problematic because the record is closed. That is new evidence that is not in the record, that folks did not get an opportunity to weigh in on. And it is something that is, that your fellow commissioners now are considering for the first time instead of having an opportunity to think about it as part of the public hearing process and to question you about it. So anyway, that is why and what substantial evidence looks like.
It'll also get us trouble in court too. But I did want to add one thing. Can you talk about when they're looking at geotech reports or traffic study consulting, things that are maybe a bit more technical and they're less familiar with that topic? How should they consider that evidence?
So again, the legal standard is whether a reasonable person would look at this and rely on it. Would it be reasonable for a person to rely on the opinion of a professional licensed experienced consultant to do X? And if you are unsure whether or not a reasonable person would find that way or would rely on that evidence, the way to go about it is to ask the expert. Ask the expert what their qualifications are. Ask the expert what kind of studies they did to determine this. Ask the expert how they calculated this. Ask the expert to explain it to you. If they can't explain it to you, then maybe a reasonable person wouldn't rely on that. When you have a situation where a battle of the experts, one traffic engineer versus another traffic engineer, the decision of who to believe rests with the planning commission. So Luba would affirm a ruling by you about which to believe. If it is between a licensed traffic engineer and a layperson, you don't necessarily have to take the licensed traffic engineer's findings. But if you're not going to, you have to explain why. You have to explain why you found that traffic engineer's analysis incredible, incomplete, why you find this layperson's testimony more reasonable. You have to explain your analysis so that the city commission, when they review your decision or if it gets to that point, the Land Use Board of Appeals reviews their decision, they know why. Just to say, I go with this evidence, we have to know why. So that's the kind, you know, I think that planning commissioners don't question applicants and participants enough. And I don't know if it's because we don't want people to feel put on the spot or feel defensive or, but, or why. But I think we don't, or because we don't, we don't want to look like we don't know the answer because we're the decision maker, we're supposed to know all the answers. But really, this is the opportunity, I mean, the judge questions the witnesses, right? The decision maker questions the witnesses. So that's what the, that's what the public hearing process is supposed to be about.
I got one thing to say about that. I think sometimes, it's not that we don't feel qualified to ask a question, but we just, we feel like we're not the, I guess maybe that's what it is. We just, we don't feel like, why would we ask a professional, you know, a question when I'm not, I don't have the same personal, professional capacity as the engineer? So he's a geotech, he's been doing it for 40 years and I'm going to ask him, you know, explain how you've done this and just, so you're going to try to, you know, and you're not trying to make him look wrong, but I don't feel like we have the capacity to. And you're going to ask him a question that's going to make you look wrong.
Sure, sure. And I think, so a couple of thoughts about that. One, you don't have to ask him any questions. You can trust him because he's a professional, right? This is his job and his reputation's on the line to get it right, right?
But he was hired by the applicant, so you know, you got that side too.
So in order to provide you some independent review of this, the city has on contract a geotechnical engineer and a traffic engineer who review these technical reports and provides the planning commission their opinion as well. So it is not as though, you know, we're trying not to set you up against, you know, these qualified hired guns, but, you know.
But Durk, and at the same time, there's been several occasions over the last many years I've been here where the citizens will come up and ask the same questions that I'd be interested. What time of day did you take those counts? What day of the week did you take those counts? Because a lot of people doubt when somebody's paid for by something, by, no offense to the city, but or by the developer. the city, but, or by the developer. Some of us may want to know, well, did you do that all week long? Or was it only one week? And was it during vacation time? I mean, there's questions you can ask of them, because you want to know, because the citizens are telling you one thing and they're saying something different. That's what I look for. Am I wrong?
No.
I think you're right. I think another thing that Commissioner Guile does that's really good is, I know sometimes he asks a question knowing what the answer is, but wanting to get it on the record for people who are watching or sitting in the audience. And I think that's great. You know, he, there's not any problem with holding the experts' feet to the fire a little bit and making them say it on the record.
And I think that's good, that technical experts can go on however deep they want to get into the acronyms and all of that study. You know, even if you're asking them, can you lighten that up a little bit to hit more of the population? I don't think it's putting him down or arguing any of his facts, but see if he can bring it back and give an example that turns light bulbs on for more people.
For sure.
No, I would just encourage our questions to stay geared towards the applicable criteria, because I don't want us to look like we're making decisions on things that are not the applicable criteria, even though they may be interesting.
So, to your, sorry, no good. Your, to your comment, Carrie, about, about not bringing in something during deliberation afterwards. So, when is the right time? If I'm coming to a, to a hearing and I know that there's something I want to say, is that something that should be done when we do our disclosures at the beginning? Or is that something that you find time to work in during the public hearing portion of it? What's, how should we go about that? Like, let's say we have a, if we make a site visit and we, and we get a real hit impression that we want to make sure.
The disclosures is the ideal time. That's the best time. But sometimes I think the public hearing sort of starts going and that jogs for you an experience that you've had that now seems really relevant.
Mm-hmm.
And so, sometimes, you know, it may not be something that you thought of before, but now you feel like that's really qualified, that's really important to the decision-making process. And so, when you, so when it occurs to you, you need to say, assuming the record's open, you need to say, you know, there's something that has occurred to me that I want to share with the group, based on, that's my experience that I think is germane to this review. And then you offer it. Let's say, let's say it comes up after the record's closed and you're in deliberation. The answer is reopen the public record. Take the, hear the commissioner's experience or evidence, allow other people to testify and respond to it, and then close the record and go back to where we were. So, there's no.
We did that at one point. Yeah, I did that.
We've done it.
The same thing that Mike asked holds true. Sometimes when you listen to the public and you've had all the other witnesses, for the, for the applicants up there, and then all of a sudden you have serious doubts because you've heard things from the, from the audience, the citizens. And so, you, do you bring up those doubts, why it's still open? Or do you, like, when you're doing deliberation, well, I heard this and I heard this, and I just don't know?
Well, but doubts, doubts based on the evidence that has been submitted is not the same thing as, as evidence that is not in the record.
Right.
Do you see the difference? Is you hear testimony and we go to deliberation and you say, "I've got doubts about this. I'm really leaning towards finding that this particular criterion is not met either because this is what the standard requires and the evidence was this." That's different. Then, the record closes and you say, "You know what? As the owner of this particular store on this particular street, I know that there's no parking out there. Between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m., there is no parking."
True.
Well, that, that is, those are factual statements that are, in other words, evidence that is not in the record yet.
Okay.
That is influencing you to make a decision a certain way, and that evidence was not in the record and folks did not have an opportunity to respond to that.
I would also add that even if stuff was in the record, when the applicant comes back up to rebut the comments, that's a really good time to say, like, based on the evidence and the record, I'm struggling with this, because it's their job to prove how all the criteria is met. And so, if you're struggling with something, saying, "I don't think this is met," just tell them, and so they can at least have a chance.
So, what if you feel you're being lied to by somebody, like an attorney? You can't say, "I don't feel you're telling me the truth."
Yeah, I mean, we could.
Sometimes I felt we've been lied to.
That's fine. I mean, we have staff, I mean, we have other people than that one attorney that's hopefully analyzed that one thing. We've written staff reports on it and we have maybe consultants or other things. So, you can take that together and figure out who you want to believe.
So, there's lots of ways to do this, I guess, several ways. But the timing of a pertinent topic that's bugging me, I would think I would want to put that out there before the applicant's final rebuttal. You know, if you, if you close the record and then bring it out, boy, you've handcuffed them.
It's good to do as early as possible, because then the public can also comment on it.
But if you do it too soon, you might start a force water out there and a.
But it's okay, because then you're saying, "Here's my issue. Please figure this out."
I guess, I mean, if you look at the script, there's no spot in there for planning commissioners to insert this, right? There's no spot for that. I mean, that was the, that was, I mean, that's the same.
No, but we have to acknowledge that, you know, there's, there's a process that's perfect and then there's good enough, because we're all human and stuff's going to come up. So, you know.
I got, we got one more thing. Well, probably I got more than that. But I should probably notice, but when we're deliberating, we can talk about anything that was in the application materials.
Yes.
And staff report, even if we didn't talk about it during the meeting.
Yes.
Okay. We don't have to talk about it during the meeting to start deliberating and then thinking, you know, the one thing I saw in the staff report really makes me, you know, lean this way, even if we didn't talk about it before, when the record was open.
No, you don't have a legal obligation to raise that stuff. But what Laura's saying is that it might be a best practice as a commissioner to put the public on notice that you have these concerns.
Right.
Just so that folks have an opportunity to respond to that concern.
Yeah, that'd be ideal. It's just sometimes it pops into your head too late.
For sure.
But you still want to bring it up.
And I'm going to bring up something that Laura and I spent about a good hour after one of these meetings talking about. Some commissioners in the past who have served on here, some have quit because of it, and there's been other discussion that the staff only gives us what they want for, on behalf of the city. And Laura and I talked about that, and as Laura said, she's here to support us, and that the staff isn't trying to make this decision. Yet, when a lot of people feel, well, the staff is telling you, "We recommend approval of this," and some commissioners and other people have felt that they're guiding us, do you care to address that, since we, you and I talked about it?
Yeah, yeah. You're the decision maker, not me. We just make recommendations and we are all human. We could have a wrong recommendation, or there could be new evidence that comes up that sways that in any particular way. But our job is to write findings for you, because you're judges. This is a legal proceeding and we need to have findings. And so, if we come in with a recommendation of approval, well, I'll talk about this one because it's all closed and the appeal's done. We had a recommendation for denial for the parking adjustment, because we didn't have sufficient information. And it was continued, there was more information that came in, and eventually it changed. But our job is to write findings for you. So, if you want to deny something, it's, you have an obligation to explain what your concerns are, so that we can write findings for that concern. If there's something that's missing that we can help provide evidence of, let us know so we can do that. I think with that last one, staff did some additional analysis, discounting some sidewalk areas where there was no sidewalk or lighting or things like that. So, that is your job to give us guidance on how something ought to be analyzed differently. And, but certainly, our job is to support you, so you can make an informed decision that can hold up in court, and you are a judge. So, if you have a question, if you have concerns, state it so that people have a chance, the public and the applicant, to respond to them.
See, Laura, I think where the rub comes in for the citizens and some previous commissioners is the fact that when the staff says, "We recommend" or "We don't recommend," it feels like you're, even though it's not the case, but it feels like you're guiding us as to what to do. And they feel the staff should just present the findings and say, "This is what you're deciding on."
There are some, there are some cities who do it that way.
Because they feel the city right now is directing us.
That, that can be an approach. The, my experience with that approach is that it does not, it's not as efficient, because somebody has to start the ball somewhere. Somebody has to say something. Or everybody's going to sit in silence and wait for somebody else to talk first, right? And so, staff takes the first shot. It is based on just the evidence the staff has. So, you know.
But you can understand how citizens.
I can understand that concern, and like I said, there are cities who do it differently. But in my, in my view, it is the more, we have to balance efficiency and, you know.
I think it's part of that education process for the citizens, too, that just because the city recommends it doesn't mean that they're trying to get us to approve it. It's, this is part of the process, we have to.
Sure.
But citizens don't understand everything all the time, because they're not in here all the time.
Yeah, we can slip some sentences into our staff, our staff report templates, I'd explain that a little bit more.
When we recommend something that's based on the findings or the criteria or something, I don't know.
You will not hurt our feelings. Well, our job is to make sure that this process works. And so, that's where, I mean, we spend a long time writing those. I'm sure everyone is not perfect, and that's okay. That's why there's seven of you and only one of us writing reports, and we obviously check them and things like that. But it is okay. You don't feel like you are pressured to do anything at all.
Thanks.
Okay, we're way past my allotted time budget, so.
I'm sorry, could I ask just one more quick question?
No.
Okay.
Please, Commissioner Stoll.
About the, the experts and questioning them. So, I've, I've never seen any of the city's traffic engineers come in to a meeting, but obviously applicants usually have them in. I'm guessing that's mostly because the cities, in the last year, there's been no conflict between experts? If there is a conflict between experts, if the applicant's traffic engineer says one thing, the city says something else, then would the city's engineer come in to offer their point of view, or?
Yes, that's a good question. So, I make a financial call on if it makes sense to us to pay someone to come in or not. See, you may have seen, I forgot on Beaver Creek Road if we had our transportation engineer, double-check that study. But if you have a concern when you read any of your reports, let me know, and that will trigger me to, to have our transportation engineer come in. So, it's all in a risk analysis. If we think it's no big deal, there's no comments on it, and it's pretty standard.
Yeah, I mean, for the last year, it's been, you know, yeah, we agree, basically.
We work with them a lot in advance, and so, we get people who don't turn in applications because it doesn't work out.
Oh, I see.
Or who change their stuff significantly in order. So, I think their goal as an applicant is to try and narrow the issues and add a little bit more certainty, so.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So, the, when you find that, there are some cases that you'll determine that an application cannot be approved based on what they have proposed, but conditions of approval can get it there. In other words, there's something you can condition the applicant to do in order to assure that the criteria are satisfied. And this can be plant a certain number of trees. It can be install a certain type of curb or a certain type of sidewalk. So, I'm going to jump forward to, there is a constitutional requirement that these conditions have to relate directly to the impact from the development, and they have to be roughly proportional. In other words, there has to be a proportional relationship between the ask set forth in the condition and the impact from the development. In other words, asking a single property owner who wants to develop two, that wants a partition to add another house on a parcel of land cannot be asked to install a entire sewer pump station, because that sewer pump station will serve hundreds of residential lots and not a single property owner. So, they can only be forced to shoulder their percentage of the cost of that pump station. And we can work with, we work with the applicants and the planning commission to sort of identify these areas where we may come into a constitutional limitation on our ability to exact or condition a development. But you need to know that that is an obligation and something that is out there as well. What else you want to talk about, about takings? I just wanted to bring it full circle, so that we started with the Constitution and we end with the Constitution. See how I did that?
That's fine.
Anyway. Questions, comments, criticisms, jokes?
Oh, I do have one more thing to add, which was about record stuff. If you make notes during a meeting.
Oh, I should have said that, yeah.
Then, we will collect those after the meeting and those will become part of the record.
So, how are you supposed, if it's continued on to the next one, how are you supposed to remember what were your notes, the questions you wanted to ask? I've run it out a lot of times. I'd rather just write it on my hand, so you can't keep my hand, because I want to ask these questions later.
We will send you copies of it. If you give it to us that night, I will email it to you the next day if you want. We can, I can take a picture of it and.
So, like tonight, I've been writing down questions for Carrie for later, and so, I'm supposed to turn this in because they're questions for Carrie?
No, this isn't a public, I haven't, well.
I'm just feeling.
It's a public, it's a public record. It's not part of the record of a proceeding.
Yeah. So, what do our notes have to do with public record, when we're jogging notes to ourselves to remember to ask things? Well, how's that a part of a public record?
Isn't this, isn't this.
This is the Westland.
A dispute in Westland right now? Yeah, I thought so.
Uh-oh, I didn't hear about that one.
Whether or not an individual commissioner's notes are a public record.
Is it only when the record is on a particular.
The only public record, what the whole body does.
And I don't know that it's.
Well, for six years, we passed notes up and down up here and nobody said anything.
Okay, in Westland.
You cannot pass notes up and down here.
In Westland.
To be very clear.
I love you.
You can talk, you can pass notes about what kind of flavor of ice cream you want to get at Menchie's, but you cannot, so in Westland, there was a commissioner who took a lot of notes. And a citizen who happened to be in law school filed a public records request, asking for copies of those notes as a public record. When I say the word "public record," that is different from the record of a proceeding in a land use case. Those are two different things that have many similar words in them. But a public record is a writing related to city business. So, what kind of flavor you like at Menchie's is not city business. But questions you may have about, about this presentation that are written down could theoretically be a public record. And if someone were to file a public records request, it is possible that we would have to turn over those notes. And so, this law student went to circuit court and challenged, went to circuit court and challenged the city's ability to withhold this commissioner's notes, his counselor's notes, and they lost.
The attorney lost or the?
The city lost.
City lost.
And so, there is some precedent, and it happens to be in Clackamas County, that notes written by a counselor or a commissioner are public records.
So, even though you have handouts to us, and they've been pretty thick over the code enforcements, and we've all made notes on the side, like this, we need to change this or we should do this.
That could be a public record.
Those stacks have to be given back to you, even though those are notes to.
They don't have to be given back to us, but if they, if we got a public records request for that document, we would have to produce it.
Because I'd hate to see what the.
And so, that's why we ask that you give them to us.
Yeah.
Because then we don't have to go through the trouble to try to get it.
Or if you've recycled it, the city commission will just pass down their pieces of paper at the end. at the end of every meeting.
Would this apply to a legislative action we're doing?
It would be, it's anything discussing public, city business.
Because I also know that several times.
So when we got those 400-page code amendments here.
That's what I was referring to.
Eight months ago when we scribbled all over it.
That was pre-case. That was pre this case, actually, because it was like a year ago.
But, you know, like some of the hearings where we have that place packed, I think all of us or some of us commissioners and previously, we would take notes, this, this person came up and they said this, this person came up and said this.
Sure.
Because you're trying to keep track in your mind of who said what. And so even though we have to give to you and we're trying to remember who said what.
Right.
Wow.
But we can take a picture of it first, right?
Yeah, well, you got cameras, we'll take a picture of it.
That's going to lengthen some of our meetings, I would think. If we have notes, we can get to it, but we're, if we don't have notes to say, oh, yeah, I got to ask this question.
Well, you can have the notes.
You can still take a note. I mean, if you have a note that says ask this question or curious about that, it doesn't, it's fine. You, don't be discouraged from writing it down, we just want them once they're written.
Sorry, it took longer than I thought.
Well, that's because we had questions and I think it's good.
One question on this, can we get a copy of this?
For sure. Absolutely.
We'll send it out.
Good, yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
Good idea. All right, anything else on that topic? Okay, 4B, 2020 agenda items not related to land use applications.
Oh, no.
Wow, that's a cool shot of the bridge.
It's only two slides.
It is only two slides, yeah. Isn't it? Yeah. We're playing, for side note, we're doing templates for staff reports or we're playing around with certain templates, so you may see the same templates over and over as time goes on. So you may see this bridge a lot. So items, you're going to have a lot of land use applications presumably in this next year. We know of a couple of big ones that are coming down the line. I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page about the other stuff we need to do rather than the processed land use applications. We will be working on our comprehensive plan update. I'll be giving you more information as that progresses. We were awarded one grant and we are tentatively awarded a second grant, are working on a consultant. I will, don't worry, more information to come. At the city commission update this past December, these are the items that were listed as far as the other things that we were going to do this next calendar year. So it's work sessions with HRB, TAC, NRC, and CIC. And then also at the end of this year, we're going to start to want to gather our thoughts on what should go in the next biennium, goals and associate. The last time we did goals and budget, the planning commission had a recommendation of some items they thought the city commission should tackle. And so we'll be looking at that too. Does this look correct? Is there anything specifically you want to talk about with any of these boards or committees? Or do we, we still want to do all this? I just want to make sure that I am supporting you the best way that I can. Is there other legal training we need? Are there specific topics you want to talk about?
Are there topics for all of these meetings or is this just a sort of, let's just do it once a year kind of thing?
I have not heard the planning commission say that they wanted to talk about anything specifically with any of these. If you do, that would be helpful, but I have not heard. I've just heard the planning commission say you want to meet with them.
So we're not involved with the Grand Ron decision? I know there's this city meeting, I think up at Pioneer Center.
Library.
Library. At the library, but there is no, planning commission is not yet involved with anything? That's just the city commission process right now with the Grand Ron?
Yeah, they're, the city commission is meeting with the tribal council, the confederate tribes of Grand Ron later this week and it's just a meet and greet to get to know each other.
It's, it's unopened to the public though, right?
It is, yeah. And the planning commission will be reviewing phase one of the Riverwalk when it is ready to be reviewed. So you'll be included as a part of this review authority.
From what I read, it's going to be a different from what all the charades that we went through for a while, that the Grand Ron Indians have determined a different way to handle it than what we all had decided? Is that true or?
No, they're working on an alternate approach to phase one.
Alternate is what I meant.
Just phase one though, right? Not the whole design. The community worked together on a full design of the Riverwalk.
Okay.
So still early on, we'll see where it goes, but we're looking forward to it.
Eight years, we'll see it.
I've been impressed, they're working quickly.
I think, I think we were saying for the transportation advisory committee, I think Chair Mitchell wanted to talk about the separated bike lanes. I don't know if that, they have some input in that.
We did.
Okay.
And we will tell you next time we see you.
Nice, okay. Any other comments on this or this is something we could, think about this list and we can discuss it at our next meeting or two and revise it if we need to.
If things come up, like neighborhood associations are starting to ask questions about a technical thing, or you hear people concerned about geotecs or something, we can always do educational sessions as needed as well.
Yeah. All right. Communications.
I only have one thing and that's the state is hosting community conversations on additional housing choices and housing supply. This has to do with some recent legislative House bills 2001 and 2003 and two of them are this week. And so on Wednesday, January 29th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at PCC Willow Creek in Hillsborough, they'll be meeting to have that community conversation. And then there's one on our side of the river on Thursday, January 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Clackamas Community College Harmony Campus in Milwaukee.
And those, those are both related to which?
House bills 2001 and 2003. Those are the, up to fourplexes and single-family residential zones.
Yep.
And the obligation, House Bill 2003 is an obligation to provide more granular evaluation of housing needs. Right now, we do low, medium, high housing prices and we have to drill down on that more under this bill to evaluate both the demands on the demand side and the supply side in terms of what is affordable and what is not.
What was the one in Milwaukee?
It's on Thursday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at CCC, Harmony.
Okay. Not to extend the meeting, but I do have a question for you. I've been watching on the news about Salem and where they've allowed camping, where they're not. Has Oregon City done anything about that at all about making rules, you can't be up here or there? Is there anything in there that we've, I missed about it?
Yeah, the city commission was considering some changes to our camping ordinance and I think they did review one and they may have to come back for a second round. I'll have to follow up.
We've been going over affordable housing, but of course that same subject comes up side by side about all the homeless people.
There is a couple of court rulings that helped limit some cities' abilities to do things, so they had to change some of the ways that they regulated when people can move. I think potentially this is a planner talking about things that are not planning, but I believe the court said you can't ask people to move from public property if they have no place to move to.
In Boise.
Boise, yeah.
To provide an alternative place for them to go.
Correct.
So.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And you cannot limit their ability to sleep. So you have to let them sleep and then in the morning you can move. I think is what I heard. Anything else?
That's it.
Restraint.
Carrie, Laura, thank you very much. That was very helpful. Appreciate it. Chris, once again, welcome.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.